Good evening, everyone. Let me welcome you to our Burke County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting for Tuesday, October the 20th, 2015. I'm going to call us to order at this time and welcome all of you here tonight. I'm sorry that some of you have to stand, but we don't have any more chairs outside. Are we good? Okay. At this time, if you would, please check your telephones or your mobile devices and put those on silent for us. We would appreciate that. If you are speaking tonight, if you come to the podium or the table, we would ask that you get as close to the microphone as you can so that we can hear you. And again, we welcome you to the meeting. Our invocation tonight will be, excuse me, Madam Clerk, all of the Commissioners here along with the county attorney and the county manager, the deputy county manager. Our invocation tonight is going to be by Pastor Ron Cooper, Al Bethel Baptist Church. And right after Ron has the invocation, our Burke County 4-Hers will lead us in the pledge of allegiance to the flag. So is our 4-Hers outside?
They're there.
Oh, they're there. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, they're also going to do the 4-H pledge as well.
Doing the 4-H pledge also. Great. Okay. So at this time, if you will join me by standing for our invocation, Reverend Cooper.
Let's bow together for a word of prayer. Oh, Father, we just want to pause and thank you for being our God. Lord, we confess to, too many times, we forget to thank you for common graces that you give us, such as being able to breathe this air that we have. Lord, life itself, we just want to thank you that you have granted this to us. Lord, many of us have experienced safety, and we want to thank you for that. We want to thank you for this place that we live, called Burke County. And Father, I thank you for these county Commissioners. I pray, Lord, that you'll give them wisdom, that you'll give them direction, that your Spirit will rest on them in a special way. And Father, I pray for this county. We just look to you. Father, you know the things we need and what things that need to take place. And Father, we know that you're the one who can move businesses into this area and, Lord, that can meet the needs of our people here in this county. And so, Father, I pray tonight that you'll guide this meeting, that you'll be the one who oversees everything we do. And, Lord, that we'd bring glory and honor to your name. Thank you again for being our God. We love you, and we ask this now in Jesus' wonderful name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, if you would please join us in the 4-H pledge. I have brought to 4-Hers, current and former officers of our county. You may read the pledge. Thank you for joining us.
I pledge my hands to clear thinking, my hearts to greater loyalty, my hands to larger service, and my health forever living for my club, my community, my country, and my world.
If y'all will remain up there for just a moment, let us come down and take a quick picture with you. Gentlemen, in front of you have the minutes from the May 26, 2015 recess meeting, June the 9th recess meeting, June the 16th regular meeting, July the 7th pre-agenda meeting, and July the 7th special meeting. I think we've all had time to take a look at those. If there's no correction or additions, we will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, a comment before we do the motion.
Yes, sir.
I brought up a point in one of the meetings, I believe it's May 26th, and it was my bad. It was really the July 7th that the things I can, it was the same subject, but just part of it was said, so I just wanted to clear there on that. And I will make the motion that we approve all five.
All right, gentlemen, you've heard Wayne's motion. All in favor, signify by raising your right hands. Be five to nothing, Madam Clerk. Moving on to item number five is the approval of the agenda. The only additional item that has been added was the request by Chris Hallfield, General Services Manager, for a water line extension. So if there's nothing else to be added, we'll entertain a motion for the agenda.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All right, gentlemen, you've heard Wayne's motion. All in favor, raise your right hands. Be five to nothing, Madam Clerk. Moving on now to number six is presentations. Our first presentation this evening is presentation of the financial data for the period ending September the 30th, 2015 of Western Piedmont Community College. That will be presented by Sandy Holman, the Chief Financial Officer. Is Sandy here? There she is.
Do you hear?
Okay, we have copies of those. They're coming back.
I wanted to briefly let you know how we ended fiscal year 2014-15. With our state funds, we spent 97 percent of our budget, with $426,000 remaining, of which a majority of that we will be able to carry forward. As for our county budget, we spent 95 percent of our budget, leaving $110,000 to roll forward. This savings was due primarily to moving our insurance policy renewal dates from a June renewal to a October 1st renewal, and that will help us in budgeting. This amount is earmarked for the greenhouse project, consisting of constructing a large greenhouse and headhouse on our Jim Richardson complex in order to make space available for our Megatronics building on our main campus. I will go into fiscal year 2015-16. First, we will look at our state funds. We have a preliminary budget of $15,309, and I say preliminary because our State Board approved a baseline budget in September, and they will approve the final budget in October. And then we will take that to our trustees in November for their approval of the college budget. Through September 30th, we have received $3,580,000 and spent $3,352,000, or 21.9 percent. If you'll look at the next three columns, which are in light blue, this is our county budget and actual expenditures through September 30th. Our current budget is $2,446,000, which includes county appropriations, rental income, and interest income. We have received $413,0279 and expended $622,355. The difference in that amount is just a timing difference. We received our September county appropriations and deposited that on October the 2nd, so it's just a timing difference in mailing there. But we were able to continue operations with our fund balance. The last three columns you see are our institutional budget, and we budgeted $8,980,000. And this is mainly for our financial aid, grants the college receives, our self-supporting courses, bookstore, and other miscellaneous accounts. Most of these accounts are restricted in nature as to their designations. For example, a grant would only be able to spend on what that grant approval was for, so most of that is restricted. But 75 percent of this budget is financial aid to our students, which could be federal or state or scholarships. And then 15 percent for bookstore operations. On the bottom left, you'll see our capital improvement projects that we have. We have one state project that still has $88,000 left in that. That was from a previous year of state funds. And then the county has allotted $433,400 for the Megatronics program or the building, and $225,000 for a two-story burn building at our emergency service training center. It doesn't work, Sandy. It's not working. So the next two slides we have, the first one is our state funds broken down by categories. And as you can see, a majority is spent on salaries and benefits, 93 percent in the first quarter. It's usually larger in the first quarter because our salaries don't change from quarter to quarter, but in the first quarter of our fiscal year, there's less spending on other expenditures like supplies and equipments because we're just beginning to purchase things for the new year, so we haven't actually spent money on those yet, but they've been ordered. The second slide is our county with expenditures there broken down by categories. And you can see that most of those are salaries and benefits, utilities, and then also insurance is where the majority of those expenditures are. The next two slides that you'll see in the presentation are actually our capital improvement projects. The first one is the Megatronics building that we are in the process of building. Wanted to take a few minutes to talk about these two projects that are going on on our campus. The original cost for the Megatronics building was, for construction, was $1.7 million. We did receive a grant from Golden Leaf for $750,000, a match from Burke County for $433,400, a grant from the Cannon Foundation for $100,000. And then we made some slight adjustments to the construction costs to lower some expenditures there. We're waiting to hear from ARC, which is the Appalachian Regional Commission, for another grant request. That grant request is $378,000, which would give us all the funding necessary for this project. If that grant does not come through, then we will use the $88,000 from the capital improvement project that we have, and then also the flexibility this year to move state equipment money into a capital improvement project. The next slide, this is for our two-story burn building, and we've contracted with Holland and Hammrich, and they are in the design stages of this building now. And I wanted to take just a moment to talk a little bit about the emergency service training program and just two examples of recent training that we've had. In September, the North Carolina Helicopter and Aquatic Rescue Team held training for a week on our campus. There was an average of 62 participants, and daily, there was 32 hotel rooms and approximately 600 individual meals purchased in Burke County. The majority of these folks were from Charlotte, Raleigh, Rocky Mountain, Asheville, along with other areas of the state. The interesting thing with these folks is they were also recently, many of these participants were recently deployed to South Carolina to assist in the rescue operations for the flooding. Excuse me. Also, we recently completed the annual Fire College this past weekend, where there were over 35 vendors at the Foothills Higher Education Center and hundreds of training participants. These individuals were also from out of town, many again spending the night and eating in our local restaurants here in Burke County. So we've had several inquiries also about this burn building that we'll have additional training opportunities once we're able to get that built. So needless to say, we're very excited about this project and very appreciative to the county. And so that concludes my report ending September 30th. Are there any questions?
Gentlemen, questions for Sandy?
Sandy, where is the Megatronics building on campus?
Where will it be? If we can go back to the slide where the Megatronics building is, you'll see it's actually located between Breeden Hall and the Ralston Building, which is across the campus from Moore Hall, which is the administrative building. So it's in the middle of the commons area or in the center of the campus.
Thank you. Any other questions for Sandy?
Mr. Chairman, a question, but not related to this. It's a good report. How are we doing the enrollment? Are we holding even above last year, or what's the trend?
We're slightly down a little bit with our file numbers, but not as much as we have been the last two to three years. It's about 2% to 3% in file that we were down. But again, with the, our legislators approving year-round funding, we anticipate summer enrollment going up, and so we feel like we're on the right track now going upwards. And that decline, that is seen across the state, along with all of our other sister institutions. I think there's only probably two to three that actually have seen increases, and that's mostly in your urban areas.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
Okay, without objection, your report is accepted. Dr. Helmick, I'm going to ask you to do me a favor. If you'll hit about two of those blinds over there, we would appreciate it. Thank you so much. All right, moving on, our next presentation will be a presentation of financial data for the period ending September the 30th from the Burke County Public Schools, presented by Keith Lawson. Keith?
Good evening, Chairman Carswell. It's been some time. Members of the board, county officials, thank you for entertaining me this evening. I'm here to present a bit prematurely at this point, although we do now have a state budget. Burke County Public Schools has yet to this point to receive all of our state allocations, so it really is a projection at this point. It could vary upwards of a couple of million dollars from where I've estimated, and we have yet to receive any of our federal allotments. So that being said, we can look at the first slide, and I'll start with the very far-left column. You can see that what that is, is that's just simply a descriptor of the state funding, or the funding sources, with the first being state funds. I'm anticipating at this point in time, state revenues of approximately $72 million. September year-to-date, through the first quarter, we've received in revenue $19 million of those, of that estimate, or approximately 26.5 percent. Our federal funds, I'm projecting, based on last year's allotment, $8.5 million. We've spent $788,000 at this point, which is only 9.3 percent. The reason for that being is we haven't received our federal allotments, and most of our allotments federally are based on a reimbursement rather than upfront funding. So what we do is we spend the money and ask the federal government for reimbursement. So we've basically been operating at minimal levels on federal funds and managing that with our cash fund balance. Next is our local allocation, which is our second-largest source of funding, which is you, the county. That's $14,539,000. Through the first quarter, we've spent $3.5 million of that, or approximately 24 percent. Fines and forfeitures are estimated to be $380,000. We've spent 95, or received 95 in revenue to this point. We anticipate for the 15, 16-year to utilize approximately $898,000 of fund balance to balance our budget. And again, that could vary based on how our final state budget looks. And then our special revenue fund, which are funds that are, we receive that could be federal funds, state funds, local funds, our daycare operation programs, pre-K tuitions, things of that nature, we estimate to be $5 million at this point, and we've spent approximately 16.3 percent. So in total, we estimate our revenues this year to be $100, or $101 million in comparison to last year of $102.2. Very hard to see on these screens, isn't it? I apologize for that. The second slide is our local budget, which is, again, what you, the county, fund, and we have that divided into purpose function, with the first being the $5,000 purpose function, which is our regular instructional services. If you follow across, I have for historical purposes comparisons to previous years, and through the first quarter, we've spent $727,000. Next is our support and development services. What that consists of primarily, and that's the lion's share of our local budget, is that's facilities operations. That's anywhere from the insurance to water, sewer, utilities, and upkeep of our school buildings. We've spent approximately $2.5 million of an anticipated 9.6 budget. Next, our payment to other governmental units. Our budget for this year is $506,000. We've spent $226,000, which is over 50 percent of that particular category. But what we do is we pay for 86 students that attend Avery County schools that live in the far western Burke region of Jonas Ridge, and it's far safer for those students to attend based on that winter schedule of Avery County, and we pay a per-pupil allotment to Avery for those services. Last year, we had paid that in the second quarter. We received that invoice early this year, so that has been paid. So at this point, what I will add is that our spending is under a quarter's worth of spending, but if you will keep in mind what our budget has peaks. Our first quarter, we only have two months of three months' teacher pay because the summer month it's off. Then we peak in our second and third quarters with spending because we have full quarters of teacher pay, and then our fourth quarter dips again because we only have two months of teacher pay in the fourth quarter. I will also add that we were very pleased that we were not forced to increase our driver's education program tuition. We were going to have to increase that to $250 per student to take driver's education, but the state did again this year, at the very end of the budget cycle, decide to fund that. So we're very pleased that we don't have to pass that cost along to our students.
All right, gentlemen, any questions for Keith?
Mr. Chairman, Keith, I believe you said back on the first slide, the special revenue, you may have said where that money comes from, the $5 million?
Yes, sir.
Where does that come from?
That's our daycare program operations for the childcare services we provide before and after school. Our parents pay for that service. We have parents that pay for our pre-K program for their children to attend that. We also have DSS vouchers that pay for pre-K slots. We have many, many of our grants that we receive, whether they be federal, state, or local, they are also ran through this special revenue fund. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, one quick question, if I may. On your revenue sheet and chart?
Yes, sir.
You get one cent on the Article 42, and then you get one cent sales tax. And I'm just thinking back to our budget, that figure came up to about $7.5 million. You have 214. Is the reason that's not listed here is you've not received any yet, or?
No, no, we are. That's our capital fund, which I do not reflect here. I would certainly be more than happy to do so.
Okay.
But we submit firstly that that goes towards debt service for the high schools, and then secondly, our facilities improvements throughout the year. I'll certainly be happy to add that to this presentation.
That's fine. So you don't include it in your estimated revenues, except when you talk about the capital funds, right?
Right. What I reflect here is your local allocation in a little greater detail, but still at a very high level, and then also our operating revenues rather than our capital budget.
All right, any other questions or comments? All right, without objection, Keith, we will receive your report.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. Moving on to item number three from cooperative extension, the Burke County 4-H program update and new agent introduction, Springbird Williams.
Please, sir.
Green Williams, Bird.
Yeah, that's okay.
Green Birds Williams.
I'll answer to it. Thank you.
Excuse me.
As you may know, we did have a vacancy for the past six months with our 4-H program, so I am very pleased to be able to introduce our 4-H agent to you. Ms. Nikki Steer actually is from Caldwell County. She worked with Burke County about 20 years ago as a 4-H program assistant. So recently graduated from Gardner Web, and we're thrilled to welcome her back, and she's here to actually give you the report about Burke County 4-H, because typically, we do this during National 4-H Week, which was the first week of October, but since our meeting dates have changed, I asked her to come in to do the report. Nikki?
Thank you. Nice to be here. We'd like to give you some information about Burke County 4-H for the 2014 year. 2014 Burke County 4-H has reached over 3,750 youth through our 4-H programs and activities. In 2014, more than 3,743 youth have been involved in 4-H school enrichment programs and other 4-H school-based programs in Burke County public and private schools. During the 2013 and 2014 year, 217 youth participated in Burke County 4-H day camps and overnight camps. And in the past year, Burke County 4-H volunteers have logged over 15,600 hours of volunteer service in the community, which results in a value of $405,600. Thank you.
And do you have any questions for Nikki? I didn't let her give this year's report because we did have that vacancy for six months, so she was really reporting on the past year. Any questions for Nikki?
Questions, gentlemen?
Welcome aboard.
Thank you so much. Madam Clerk, do I need a motion on that one?
Just accept.
Okay. Without objection, we will go ahead and accept that report. Thank you so much. Moving on, item number three from our BCECC award recognition is going to be presented by Candy Strazinski. Candy?
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, thank you for allowing me to share with you these recognitions. Burke County Emergency Communications Center was honored to receive several recognitions this year. Early on, I'd like to first make sure that I mention that the 911 Board presented an audio tape of a Burke County 911 call and CAD report. They recognized our Burke County teens standing before you here, Ms. Beverly, or Andrew Thomas, Michael Byers, Crystal Buchanan, Robert Chapman Jr., Anthony Ellis, and Jennifer Tilly, for their outstanding performance on a search and rescue that they handled early in the year. They were presented with a plaque, I believe that's being shared with you at this time, so I wanted to make sure and mention that. Burke County also were honored at this year's national or state North Carolina APOCO NINA Conference. We had three employees receive recognition for excellent service throughout the state. There were 119 communication centers across North Carolina that are represented. A total of 16 awards were presented, and we were proud to receive three of those awards in Burke County. North Carolina APOCO recognized Ms. Nikki Carswell, Ms. Carswell for the 2015 Support Personnel of the Year. This award is presented to an individual who performs in an outstanding manner throughout the year, reflecting the traditions of public safety service. And addition, in addition, she is able to play a significant role in the communications center and enhance improvements. North Carolina National Emergency Number Association also recognized Supervisor Beverly Roland as the 2015 Communications Supervisor of the Year. This award is presented to an individual in recognition of their outstanding service as a supervisor of a communications center and excellent, I'm sorry. as a supervisor of a communications center and excellent, I'm sorry, exceptional professionalism in the field of emergency communication that is demonstrated on a daily basis. North Carolina NINA also recognized myself as the Director, the 2015 Communications Leader of the Year. This award was presented for performance, performing the duties of the manager, director, or assistant director of a communications center in recognition of their accomplishments in encouraging, motivating, supporting, and mentoring their employees. Thank you.
Caught me by surprise. So that got everybody, right?
Yes, it did.
Okay. Any comments or questions for Candy?
Mr. Chairman, as we said at pre-agenda, there were only 16 awards presented. There's 119 911. You have honored us well. We appreciate it, and to you who received those awards, we appreciate your hard work. Hope you keep it up. Thank you very much.
Thank you for those comments, Maynard. Very nice. All right, we'll move into our scheduled public hearings. Our first one is zoning map amendment ZMA 2015-04 in public hearing presented by Scott Carpenter, Deputy County Manager and Planning Director. Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Honorable Board Members. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. We have two rezoning requests, and I'll present the first one, which is zoning map amendment 2015-04, which is an application from Mr. Carson Baker. Mr. Baker is wishing to rezone a 4.2 acre parcel of land, which has an existing 28,403 square foot structure on it. Mr. Baker has leased a portion of the structure to Five Tool Baseball Academy as an indoor baseball training facility. The use would most closely be associated with an indoor recreation center per our Section 920 of the zoning ordinance. The property is currently zoned industrial, which does not permit the commercial use that's being requested. Mr. Baker requests that a portion of the property be rezoned to a straight general business district, which is also shown as GB, in order to accommodate the commercial use. So the request is for the map amendment, and this property is located at 235 Baker Street, also identified as pin number 2713632335 in the Morganton Township of Burke County. The parcel can be accessed from Baker Street by way of a 22-foot driveway easement off of Baker Street. As far as the surrounding land uses, most all of the zoning is industrial to the north, south, or northeast and west, and there's R2 to the south. There's different land uses, but there's a whole lot of vacant land uses around it. To the north is some industrial with some single-family homes. The existing structure was constructed in 1981, which is prior to county zoning, and was once operated as a manufacturing facility by Mr. Baker. The existing parking area has sections of concrete as well as gravel, and there are no known streams on the property. There is no known area of FEMA designated floodplains on this parcel, and the parcel is located within the WS4 critical area of the water supply watershed, which also means that it's limited in how much impervious surface can be built on that property. Mapping records show that the parcel is served by public water. The building utilizes an onsite wastewater treatment system, or in other words, a private septic system, and the parcel is located within the triple community fire district. As far as conformity with the comprehensive plan, the 2009 urban corridor small area plan is the current comprehensive land use plan for this area. The vision for this area of the county was to preserve the area's rural heritage through the establishment of voluntary agricultural districts, or the preservation of grazing lands, and to enhance the area's commercial, industrial, and residential development presence through good planning practices. The future land use map designates the area surrounding the subject parcel as industrial, commercial, and residential zoning, so it's really quite open for a lot of different types of uses. The request for general business, we believe, could be appropriate for several of the following reasons. The urban corridor plan recommends both industrial and commercial land uses in the area. There is a large parcel zoned general business within the immediate area. The proposed rezoning from industrial to general business would be, to some extent, lessen the impact of proposed land uses, especially where large transfer trucks are concerned with industrial types of land uses. All proposed commercial uses are subject to site plan review and certain requirements, such as screening of commercial uses from residential properties. If done appropriately, the change of use from an industrial manufacturing facility to a commercial indoor recreation facility could be an improvement to the property and an asset to the community. I'd like to remind the board that two motions will be necessary for this approval, and the first motion should adopt a zoning consistency statement, and the second motion should approve or deny the proposed amendment to the official Burke County zoning map. This was heard at the August Planning Board meeting, and that board voted unanimously seven to zero to recommend that this board approve rezoning request ZMA 2015-04.
All right, thank you, Scott. Madam Clerk, I'm going to open the public hearing at this time. Is there anyone here that wants to speak to ZMA 205-04?
Don't believe I have any cards on this one.
All right, Madam Clerk, the public hearing is closed. Gentlemen, questions for Scott? Hey, here, done. What's the pleasure of the board on this matter?
Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt ordinance submitting the official Burke County zoning map as it relates to the facts presented for ZMA 2015-04.
And zoning consistency statement.
Consistency statement. You want it at the same time?
Yes, sir.
And also adopt zoning consistency statement that proposed zoning map amendment can be considered consistent with the Burke County I-40 small area plan and the Burke County zoning ordinance, and is reasonable and in the public interest because the 2003 I-40 urban corridor plan encourages economic development strategies in areas along the I-40 corridor, including the subject parcel. This rezoning request would allow for the reuse of a large unoccupied industrial structure and provide private enterprises the ability to offer certain permissible commercial and recreational business opportunities to the citizens of Burke County. This would in turn have a lesser impact on the residential uses within the surrounding area.
All right, gentlemen, you've heard the two-part motion by Jeff. All in favor, signify by raising your right hands. Be five to nothing, Madam Clerk. Thank you so much. All right, moving on to item number two is zoning map amendment ZMA 2015-05 in public hearing. Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The second issue before us tonight, as you can see, has brought out some tension from our fine neighbors and residences. Some will be speaking probably in opposition too, and some in for, in favor of this, but that is one of the things that's great about the zoning process, is it allows people to come and ask for changes to the zoning ordinance, and it doesn't make it stuck in stone, but it also lets people come out and defend the ordinance as well. And so I will present this, and after my presentation, the applicant will do a very short presentation to clarify any thing that I miss, and then we'll have a public hearing. So this is zoning map amendment 2015-05. The Broadway Group has entered into a sales contract with the property owner Larry Fan for the purchase of 2.51 acres of the 18.77 acre tract. Mr. Fan has provided a signed document authorizing the Broadway Group to act as the authorized agent in this rezoning case. As mentioned, the Broadway Group is requesting to rezone 2.51 acres of the parent tract from its current zoning of residential R3 to general business GB in order to accommodate a commercial retail use of the parcel. This zoning map amendment request is to rezone pin number 2712648270, and it's located at the corner of North Carolina 18 South and DAV Avenue in the Morganton Township of Burke County from residential 3 to general business. As far as the site analysis goes, I'll see if I can get something to show up here. This is an existing land use map of the area. This parcel is shown as a dashed line in a green line right on 18 South on the left side of the screen, and the green represents pasture. So for our land use analysis mapping, you know we mapped every land use in the county last year, and so the green is pasture land or agriculture. You can see across the road is commercial. It shows a little piece of industrial that's actually a warehouse, and we classify warehouses as industrial as far as land use purposes go. To the upper, top of the page, or I would call it north, there's a recycling center there, as well as a vacant metal structure, and then there's vacant lands behind where this parcel is recommended for the rezoning. So there's a lot of vacant land in the area. There's some wooded land in the area. There's pasture, and then there's a host of other types of activity. Most of the people that we've heard from concerning this live down DAV Avenue, about a half a mile, and there's a subdivision back there that's single-family residential in nature. Let me see if I can bring up another map here. This is a aerial of the same location, and you can see that this is the partial part of that large parent parcel that's being requested for the rezoning. If we look at the zoning map itself, you can see that it's zoned R3 residential for a whole lot of the area, and then straight across the street from DAV Avenue, it's a commercial zoning, and then to the north is industrial zoning, and then there's some commercial further down DAV Avenue that heads to the north, and then there's R1 residential further on down the road, which is where single-family housing would be allowed. So the current map shows where the current zoning districts are located, and the map indicates general business zoning directly across on North Carolina 18 South and to the west of the subject parcel down DAV Avenue. There is one known stream on the property, and the most recent FEMA floodplain maps do not indicate any floodplain on this parcel. The parcel is located within the WS4 critical area of the water supply watershed, which means that it's limited to 24% impervious surface. Mapping records show that the parcel is served by public water. There is no public sewer in the area, therefore any development would have to utilize an onsite wastewater treatment system, and my understanding is that that has been looked at by a soil scientist, and I'm not sure if environmental health for Burke County has looked at that yet or not. The parcel is located within the Salem Fire District, and the parcel is not located with any other overlay districts. As far as conformity with the comprehensive plan goes, the 1993 comprehensive land use plan is the current comprehensive land use plan for this area. The plan indicates the subject parcel is located within the I-40 East A sub area. The plan speaks to residential development of varying densities, primarily taking place in areas adjacent to incorporated municipalities. And so right down the road up 18 is the city of Morganton. The plan also mentions commercial uses consisting of highway-oriented centers bordering I-40 at major interchanges, and the plan further mentions commercial development existing in scattered locations along principal and minor arterial roads such as US 70 and North Carolina 18 South. That verbiage in the comprehensive plan is probably the reason that the existing general business commercial straight across from DAV Avenue exists, and some of it was probably older prior to county zoning. So when they applied county zoning, they went ahead with the existing businesses that were there and went ahead and zoned them general business. The 1993 comprehensive land use plan recommends single-family residential for this area. However, it must be pointed out that the plan is over 20 years old, and we're working on updating a new land use plan, and the fact is, is that what's on the ground now, it doesn't exactly mesh with that idea. And so we really see this area right here as a neighborhood business type of area. The request for general business zoning could be appropriate for this location for several reasons. The 1993 comprehensive land use plan identifies the existing commercial land uses in the area, and as a general recommendation encourages the establishment of commercial nodes to support growing communities. The proposed rezoning from residential to general business would support growth outside of the city of Morganton. There is existing general business zoning across North Carolina 18 South, as we pointed out earlier, and all proposed commercial uses are subject to the site plan review and certain requirements, such as access, stream protection, and screening, the commercial use from residential properties. If done appropriately, the change of use from a vacant use to a commercial retail use may be an improvement to the property based on an increase in county tax base and an asset to the surrounding community and providing somewhere where somebody can go for general groceries and that kind of thing. The planning board met on August 27, 2015, and they voted one to six to recommend that this board deny rezoning 2015-05. And this motion, just like the other one, would require this board, the first motion would need to be to adopt a zoning consistency statement, which I have provided, and the second motion should be to approve or to deny the proposed amendment to the official Burke County zoning map. And at this time, the representative from Broadway Group, Melissa Ballard, will come, and she will explain maybe a little better on some things that I may have missed.
My name is Melissa Ballard, and I represent the Broadway Group in Huntsville, Alabama. We're requesting that the rezoning be approved. It's a two-and-a-half acre lot out of about almost 19 acre parcel of land. We're under contract with Larry Fan to purchase the property and build a small commercial retail building at this location. As staff indicated, the land use plan is out of date and being updated, and will likely include this area to be slated for a business district. There are 10 businesses along Highway 18 currently within a half a mile of our location, and we are only one mile from the Highway I-40 intersection. The traffic concerns that I think some of the residents on DAV Avenue we're referring to are going to be mitigated hopefully by our involvement with the North Carolina Department of Transportation. We have had preliminary reviews done of our plans. We're going to be required to widen DAV at the throat where it meets Highway 18. It's an extensive widening project on 18 itself. We're going to be required to install a center-left turn lane. It involves about 1,000 square, 1,000 feet of road frontage that will be widened, tapered wide, and then left turn lane installed onto DAV, and then narrowed back down into a two-lane on the other side of the highway. It's about a $250,000 price tag that goes along with that. We're prepared to do that. We're prepared to make the intersection as safe as it needs to be and work with them We're prepared to make the intersection as safe as it needs to be and work with them in their requirements for us. There's currently no traffic light planned for that intersection. And I don't, the DOT has not asked us to provide any plans for that type of signal. We have asked them about entrance off of Highway 18. But as you can see on the shape of the lot, because there is a stream that runs right behind our property, we own, that property line, that property line represents the middle of the stream. And as you can see, it comes to a sharp point at the end of the lot, on the west side of the lot. There's no way to get a delivery truck in that narrow of a space to make access deliveries to the store. So they have asked us to come off of BAV. We have pushed our driveway as far back as we can to make the entrance in and out of the store as safe as possible. The current zoning actually allows for multifamily dwellings to be on that property. I think that there was some concern as to the traffic pickup with our store. We actually are not a destination like a mall destination. We provide a small retail store that provides a convenience to the community. Most of the traffic is stopping on the way home or on the way to work for small various items. And the length of an average shopping trip is about 15 minutes. Developing that area in fourplexes, eightplexes apartment complex, you're going to see a lot more traffic than you are with a single family or a single retail tenant operation. The North Carolina Department of Environment and Natural Resources enforces a stringent buffer to that stream. We're not allowed to touch anything within 50 feet of the entire stream. We can landscape to within 30 feet of the stream, but we can't put anything, any pervious area, impervious area within 50 feet of that buffer. So we'll be working with them to approve our plans and make sure that we're adhering to their guidelines and their requirements. The site plan will have to be approved. It'll be submitted with landscaping to the, on the rear side of the property and privacy fencing that will be, it will meet or exceed the landscaping requirements that are in your ordinances. We'll be providing eight to 10 new jobs in this area. It's capable of generating a significant tax revenue, helping to improve the lives of everyone in the community. We'll be conforming to all the zoning regulations and building codes that are, that Burke County requires. We will have exterior lighting associated with our building that's going to be providing safe access vehicle and pedestrian access. We'll be meeting the setback requirements. The signage will be in compliance with the zoning ordinances. Soil testing has been done by a North Carolina licensed soil scientist. And there is adequate area on this property that will provide the septic needs, the system for the store. And as I said, we would be providing landscaping along the back. Now whether that, it should be landscaping and a privacy fence that would be submitted and approved with our site plan. And that is about all, that's about all I have.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, Madam Clerk, at this time, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. Ladies and gentlemen, before the hearing begins, I'd like to remind you, General Statute 153A52 gives this board the authority to conduct these hearings, fix times for persons to speak, also to provide for the maintenance order and decorum of those that are speaking at the hearing. It's my understanding from Madam Clerk, there's about 15 people that want to speak tonight. We ask you, if you can, to keep your comments as close to three minutes. We do have a timer, but if you give three minutes and you happen to go over, that's okay. But if you can, go as close to three minutes as you can. For the sake of those that are speaking for and against, we will rotate and we will start with a, the way you signed up, a person that is speaking for, and then we will rotate to a person that is against. So Madam Clerk, someone that signed up first to speak for.
Okay, Ms. Ballard had signed up, but we've already heard from her. So would you like for me to go with an against?
Yes.
Okay. Kathy Griffin?
You don't desire to speak, is that correct? Okay. All right, for the four. When you come to the microphone, if you would, just announce your name and where you live, your address.
Chairman Carswell, Commissioners, Ms. Honeycutt and Mr. Simpson, good evening. My name's Susan Hare, and my office is in Morganton, North Carolina. I represent Larry Phan, who is the owner of the parcel, which is the subject of the rezoning request this evening. Thank you for your consideration in this matter. There's just a couple of things that I would like to point out, which were touched on by Ms. Ballard and Mr. Carpenter, that may affect the perception of the neighboring landowners who oppose the rezoning request, more specifically the Dollar General. The biggest question that needs to be answered, as I understand it, is whether the land is suitable for the rezoning request that's been submitted by the petitioner. And certainly precedent tells us that in order to make this decision as commissioners, you have to make sure that the petitioner is not attempting to engage in any type of spot zoning. And this question seems to be easily answered when you see the general business zoning, that business is operating on at least two sides of the subject tract. There's two convenience stores, I'm not sure we've heard that yet, but there's two convenience stores of a similar nature, not quite as big, but a similar nature, that's less than a mile of the subject tract. And neither the petitioner or Mr. Phan seek to bring a business into this area where no other businesses exist. As Mr. Carpenter has, has said, a neighborhood business seems very suitable for this area that's less than one mile from Interstate 40. With the Republic Commercial Garbage Operation that directly adjoins this property on any given day, their parking lot contains more cars than one typically sees in a Dollar General parking lot at one time. I would contend that this has not disrupted life in the residential remaining community. Secondly, although change is understandably difficult at any time, we do a disservice in this scenario to the opposing landowners by not revealing Mr. Phan's intent when it comes to this parcel of property. At the planning meeting, several people stated that they enjoyed, they simply enjoyed this field. And we understand that. We, we all love our homes and we understand that. Although my client is happy that the neighboring landowners have enjoyed this field, which he has maintained and on which he's paid taxes for over 20 years, he cannot continue to provide and sustain a nature preserve for the community as he enters his retirement years. Mr. Phan is planning for his retirement and wishes to sell the land. The reality of the situation is that if forced to sell within the current zoning, in order to maximize his profit, the sale will likely not be to individual landowners. As Ms. Ballard referenced, there are many avenues that Mr. Phan can take, which would require only a site plan. And the neighboring landowners would have no opportunity to object. There would be no guaranteed involvement by DOT to modify the road as necessary, and the field would most certainly be gone anyway. It is important to realize that refusal of this rezoning request does not preserve the field due to my client's intent to sell. Because of the nature of the land, the fact that it is bordered by land which is already classified as general business, and the guaranteed involvement of DOT in this particular situation, we believe the rezoning request is proper, and it's backed by a well-thought-out plan. And we respectfully request that the petition be granted. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hare.
Ms. Sharon Hanlon? Did I pronounce that?
Good evening. My name is Sharon Hanlon, and I live down DAV Road in the subdivision that's at the back, back there. I'd just like to address some, what was just said about other businesses in the area. Yes, there are other businesses in the area. And there is a garbage service right down the road. That garbage service does not affect in any way DAV Road. It's far enough away that none of the garbage trucks pulling in and out of their effect are entering and exiting DAV Road. And as far as other businesses in that area, there are a few that are operating in the area. There across the street, a couple are open. Many are vacant, just vacant buildings. Down the road, there is a convenience store, which is a gas station convenience store. Again, it is not on the corner of our entrance to our subdivision. And I would just ask you to consider yourselves. I don't know where you live, but do you want a store like this on the corner of the entrance to your subdivision? And I'm not begrudging the man selling his property. That's a property owner's right. I understand that. He's only selling one small portion of that property. What's he going to do with the rest of it? So if it's approved and they put the Dollar General there, who's to say he's not going to sell a larger portion? And we're still going to get something undesirable there? Nothing. So again, it's not just the view, it's peaceful out there, and I like, that's one of the reasons I moved out there. But I'm not only thinking about that. I am thinking about the traffic and the bottleneck that's going to be there at the end of DAV Road, especially with no red light. We have one way in that subdivision and one way out. And that is on 18, to get out on 18. We're going to be sitting in traffic daily trying to get out. And if there's 10 cars or if there's four cars, that's 10 or four cars more than there are now. And they're going to be providing nine to 10 jobs? I just don't think the impact on our community is worth nine to 10 jobs. And you talked about tax advantages. Well, my property taxes went up last year, and my value on my house went down. I don't see my property value going up by this store being at the corner of the entrance to the subdivision. So I respectfully ask that you deny the petition to rezon. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners, for letting us come up and speak tonight. It's going to be more than eight or nine jobs, because my landscape company will be impacted with it too, with the actual new facility being there. I think that it's going to be a great thing for the neighborhood, because they always seem to do a lot of landscaping with the actual Dollar General. So yes, it might be a pain for a while, but just think about the impact outside of that, delivery, jobs, everything else that's going to be impacted with this store. It's not going to be just eight or nine jobs. It'll be at least three more jobs as far as landscaping contract on it. That's not even talking about the install. It's not even talking about the maintenance. So if you would, please vote for this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Tammy Milligan. I live at 2671 Mount Home Church Road. By now, you should have received an email by Mr. Brian Baloo, who lives in one of the three developments that begins with DAV Road. Mr. Baloo urged each of you to take the time to drive through the neighborhood to see why most of the community is strongly urging you to vote no to bringing a Dollar General into our area. As Mr. Baloo stated in his email, many citizens do not know that there are three developments that exist once you turn off onto DAV Road. I also sent an email myself today with pictures attaching, with pictures attached to the email of homes and the stretch of community that is back out in the area. At this time, I currently live on Mount Home Church Road and have family and friends that I visit on a daily basis, sometimes two to three days, two to three times a day in which currently live in these developments. I've also looked at many homes in developments and have considered moving even closer to my family that currently live out there due to me being a single mom. Not only are homeowners in these three developments upset to your consideration to rezon the area for a Dollar General store, but you also have homeowners on Mount Home Church Road that are upset as well. I helped with a petition that goes against the rezoning request and received signatures from several people on Mount Home Church Road. In my email today, I attached these pictures urging you to look at them, drive through the neighborhood, as well as NC-18 Anola Road and out Highway 64, to view the vacant commercial real estate that is available for use. Across the street from the property that you are asking to be rezoned, there are currently vacant buildings. So why build? Within five minutes from us, there's Fiddler's Run. There's vacant buildings out there that have never had anything in them. So again, why should we build? There are approximately 12 Dollar General stores in our area that add minimum wage jobs. If we need another Dollar General in our area, please consider the Fiddler Run area, where they, we just lost the Dollar Tree out in that area. I took the time on Saturday, October the 17th, to drive to the store in George Hildebrand, which is 9.5 miles from us. I'm not sure when this store opened, but this is one of the newer stores. I arrived to see yellow buggies and trash in the parking lot, trees that were not planted, that had just been planted that are already not being taken care of. The privacy fence is a very short fence, and you can currently see through it. And I've also been made aware of at least one time that the Burke County Sheriff's Department has already made a visit to that store. At this time, we are urging you to please take this into consideration. The Morganton News Herald posted their article on Facebook, and if any of you took the time to read the comments to the article, you would have read that most citizens are really tired of Dollar Generals coming to our area. If you were looking into this area, would you consider moving because we have $13 General Stores to pick from? I feel at some point we have to say no. Please consider if it was going to be built in your development, something you had to drive by every day along with empty buildings across the street in your grandchild's neighborhood or your child's neighborhood where they walk their dogs or ride their bikes. Please answer why we should build. The majority of the community does not want the convenience. So again, I ask, why build? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Tammy.
Thank you. I have much to say. I live at, on DAV Avenue. I've been there for 36 years. And it would please me very much to have a Dollar Store down at the ends of the road where someone that can barely walk, maybe walk down there for something extra if they need. And as far as these people living off another road, I don't see as they've got anything to say, one way or the other. I appreciate it. Thank you much.
Thank you, sir.
I'm Steve Shobberly. I live at 2981 Village Drive, right off of DAV Avenue. And I've lived there for 25 years. I want to thank the planning board for their consideration and making their recommendation against the rezoning based on the facts. And the facts are these. The parcel was zoned residential for a reason, and that reason- continues to exist. The opposite side of Highway 18 is zoned commercial, was grandfathered in. Several storefronts sit vacant, with at least one vacant storefront appearing to be a suitable size for a convenience store. The sign above the door reads "Sweepstakes," indicating that it's been vacant since the General Assembly closed the Sweepstakes loophole about three years ago. It's pretty clear that there is no need for additional commercial property in the area. I therefore urge you to take the recommendation of your planning board and leave this parcel zoned as it currently is, R3. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Wynne Huffman?
What is the purpose of a public hearing? Is it to inform the adjacent property owners of the upcoming change being proposed for that adjoining property, and thereby giving them a chance to state any valid reason that rezoning should not take place? By valid, I mean, I would think this to mean any legal reason that should not take place, such as not having a clear deed, or maybe some neighbor has a right of way, or maybe there's a structure on the property that is in question as to the ownership. The point is, if there is a legal reason to deny this request, then you are certainly compelled to deny the request. But on the other hand, if the only comments are choices and preferences of how this land is to be developed, these would not be legal reasons, but rather personal wishes. No matter how many times these wishes are repeated, they are still just wishes. And speaking of wishes, I will tell you mine, and not just mine alone, but by many others. I would like to see the rezoning happen for several reasons. One, a Dollar General store will be an asset to our community, not just for the products they sell, but for the jobs they provide, not to mention the tax advantage to the county. Two, the current zoning allows a number of uses that do not contribute to our neighborhood, but would possibly decrease our property values. Example, apartments or mobile homes. This has the potential to create far more traffic than a store with only 30 parking spaces, and with some of them being more transient, we might never know our neighbors or their company, or how many times they might decide to come visit. Shoppers at a store would be less likely to do this. Three, another option for the current zoning is agricultural. This would allow animal-raising facilities, such as chicken houses or small pig farms, probably not much traffic, but is this a better choice for our neighborhood than a Dollar General? I know changes often met with resistance, but if everyone got to select what was beside of them, ask yourself, would you pick your neighbor? Or better still, would your neighbor pick you? Thank goodness, there have to be valid legal reasons, or we all might be gone. I ask you to consider this rezoning on its merits, and not by the wishful majority that may be here tonight. Some have indicated they would not have a problem with a Barnes &amp; Noble, Krispy Kreme, or some other business. This, again, is just an example, as if they get to pick what goes there, their objections go away. So I ask you to please give this rezoning at this time to granted, because I'm afraid that we will not have another offer for a store for a very long time, and we need something on our side of I-40. Thank y'all.
Thank you, ma'am.
Lloyd Wallace?
Thank you very much. I want to thank each of you for all the work you do for the county and for its residents. My name is Lloyd Wallace. I reside at 3520 Out to Vista Way, along with my wife and 15-year-old grandson. I oppose the motion to rezonate the proposed property from residential to commercial at the intersection of Route 18 South and DAV Avenue. Our home is located at the end of DAV Avenue in the subdivision called Ridgewood Mountain Village, and it consists of approximately 65 residential homes. DAV Avenue is the only access road to and from the development. In Mr. Carpenter's report, I think he suggested that the thinking of the future is for large-scale residential subdivisions. I would suggest to you that 65 homes in a subdivision currently existing meets that criteria. And what I would further suggest is that we don't do anything to not only discourage the people there, but discourage other subdivisions from being developed, and then placing a rezoning that allows for commercial entities like Dollar General to come in. We purchased our property in August of 1978, when we relocated from Asheville to Morganton due to a job change. We spent eight months looking for residents in downtown Morganton and in Burke County. And we finally settled on Ridgewood Mountain Village. So we have been there for a long time. There were only eight houses there when we moved in, and we've seen it grow to 65 houses. And we are extremely happy with the community there, with the neighbors there, and even along DAV Road going into the area. It is quiet, it has a bunch of serenity, it has easy access to Route 18, of course, Route 40, and other shopping, shopping areas that were there when we moved in and continue to be there. DAV was a gravel road when we moved in, and we helped pay for the paving of that road through the Property Owners Participation Program. That is our commitment to the community. Placing a DAV, placing a Dollar General on a DAV entrance to that does not seem to me to be something that the residents of Burke County would want, particularly when Burke Economic Development, when Chamber of Commerce is, and when others groups, including yourselves, are trying to recruit business and industry, which is comprised of residents who will be looking for property. So I think a denial of this request is very appropriate. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace.
Colby Watts?
Hi, my name is Colby Watts. I'm Chief Operations Officer for WB Embroidery Incorporated, better known as Wendy B's Embroidery and Screen Printing. We are located adjacent to where the Dollar General is being proposed for the rezoning. We are very concerned of the negative impacts that this will hold on our business with the construction, and with the widening of 18, and what amount of road furniture that that will take from our businesses. Also, speaking from a small business point of view, there is two other convenience stores in the area that carry most of the products that are available at a Dollar General. Why do we need something else selling those same products? I'm for no Dollar General near on Highway 18. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Watts.
Terry Tucker, or Tucka, Tucko?
Commissioners, my name is Terry Tucker. I have four points. The first is that the Planning and Zoning Committee did not recommend rezoning, and I think that to override their decision would be to undermine their function. They made that decision for a reason. Secondly, I want to talk to you about this petition, which is to stop the rezoning of that area. First of all, every signature on here is someone over the age of 18. It is someone who is directly affected. It is not in another town, it's not in another state. These are business owners: WB, R&amp;R, Wendy B's, Tattletales, and Ed's Discount Beverage down the store, all their names are on this petition, they are against it, they don't want this. In addition to all of those business owners that encompass the purple area on the screen, I want door-to-door canvassing and meeting my neighbors, which is a positive thing. But it's interesting that Mr. Lloyd Wallace was talking about 65 residential homes, there are 65 names here. Every single solitary door that I went to, the folks said, "We do not want this," minus two folks, and what they said was, "We don't have an opinion either way." And I respectfully walked to the next home. And so I want to say that this, this particular petition is not about numbers. If it's about numbers, I could go to my work, I could go to another town, and I could probably have 500 signatures. But it's about authenticity, it's about honesty, and it's about relevance, and these names are relevant. The third point is the issue of convenience, and I don't understand it. From DAV Avenue, it is 2.6 miles to the Dollar General, the Family Dollar, and the Mighty Dollar. 2.6 miles is probably not gonna inconvenience anybody. And if you want milk or sodas, the local businesses that have already opposed this are right across the street within walking distance. I want businesses in this area as much as anybody else does, but I believe that we've got to be both prudent, and I think we've got to be socially sensitive about our decisions. And lastly, and most importantly, this is our home. It's going to affect our personal lives, it's gonna affect our families. So I know that you will make this decision both carefully, compassionately, and wisely. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tucker.
Matthew Hobbs?
My name is Matthew Hobbs. I live at 3058 Village Drive. As many others have expressed, thank you for allowing us the time. There's no way I'm gonna be as eloquent or as thought-out as Ms. Tucker just was, but I'm gonna agree with most of the points you made. The convenience thing, there are small businesses who are owned and operated by people in Burke County, not corporations from another state. Have no problem with outside companies, but our focus should be on the community, from a business and a residential standpoint. Residential, second of all, the property that we have all purchased in that area, and that includes the property owner that's requesting the rezoning, purchase that property, knowing good and well that the property in that area was zoned residential. It doesn't seem fair to the folks there now to be able to just kinda change that. We didn't enter into the contracts we entered into, with that being the circumstance. So I think that's important to take into account. I also think that the fact that it was mentioned several times, that the current plan, referenced from 1993, focuses on that to be residential, but then it was referred to as outdated. Whether it's outdated or not, that is the current plan. That seems to me to be the plan that should guide the decision, and seems to be the plan that guided the decision of the Planning or Zoning Board, that has voted to recommend this be denied. So I would just like to echo their recommendation and ask that you please deny this, this measure. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hobbs.
Marie Palacios, Palascos, I apologize. That was a tough one.
Good evening. My name is Marie Palascios, and I'm here tonight with my little one to respectfully request that you deny this request for rezoning. I was born in Burke County and moved away and was thrilled this past year to move back home. I was recently married, we have a young child, and we looked high and low in Burke County for our first home. And in December of 2014, we found our first home on Ridgewood Drive in the neighborhoods that have been mentioned tonight. We spoke with a realtor, we checked the zoning, we knew it was a residential area. My husband and I both come from kind of small communities, and we really wanted to be able to raise our daughter in that atmosphere as well. Our little one goes to Moll Elementary School, and she's extremely excited about being a bus rider. And I was okay with the fact that the bus stop is right there on DAV Road and our road at Ridgewood. But it concerns me knowing that as she grows up, there'll be increased traffic. We did all the background checks on the neighborhood, and I just am fearful that as the community and rezoning changes, it also changes the investment my husband and I made in this home and our future with our little one. So, what did you want to say? Her request was that you don't get rid of the cows, and I know that's not relevant tonight, but we enjoy our monthly walks in our residential neighborhood. So she came tonight, has skipped supper, because she loves our walks in our neighborhood, and we'd like our neighborhood to stay a residential place for our family to grow and enjoy in. Thank you so much. I respectfully request that you deny it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Barbara Williams?
I'm Barbara Williams. I reside at 3036 Village Court. I would just like to take a moment before I begin to congratulate you and thank you on your support of Western Feidmont Community College. I know that many of you have been there for us for a long time, and that was my life for 39 years. So, thank you very much. Now, I'm gonna make enemies with you. I pretty much think this is a done deal. I think the public hearing is farce. And the reason I say it's a done deal, because I look at Package Page 120, and the only thing I see is an ordinance to grant rezoning. I don't see a copy of an ordinance in here to refuse rezoning. The other thing I would like to, to me, it's sort of contradictory. You talk about Package Page 117 and the land use program, and that it's currently in the process of being redeveloped. And it says down here, "The more suitable development that should occur is a mixture of various commercial uses and large-scale residential subdivisions." Well, I don't know of any other planned large-scale residential subdivisions. And then you go down here under stat comments, and you say, "Encourages the establishment of commercial nodes to support growing communities." But I don't see our 18 South area growing. We already have two convenience stores across Highway 18. I know that when, you know, this is all about money and greed and big business and all that kind of stuff. And you're probably, by letting the Family Dollar in, which is corporate, and yes, they'll turn some money, they'll turn in some county revenue, but you're probably gonna put two convenience stores out of business. Let's be realistic. You've also, again, got a no outlet road. You've got school buses traveling that road. You're going to decrease our property value. So when the next reevaluation comes around, I'll probably be first one in line to say, "Do you need to bring my property value down?" It just, it doesn't make sense to me. And also, I do not understand if Dollar General has got to put a business there, why their architects cannot design a building that would allow access off of Highway 18? I mean, there's got to be some way to do that. They should maybe build a store that complements the community, not their canned packaged block store. Surely their architects could design something that would go off of 18 and give us a little 20 or 30-foot buffer there on DAV. So, those are my thoughts. And I also think that the petition that was submitted by the group that was for the rezoning, those are people from all over. We could, you know, anybody that rides down 18 from New York or anywhere else might or might not stop at the Dollar General. might not stop at the Dollar General. But I think that petition should be disregarded. And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much for letting me...
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Williams.
And don't take anything personal, people, that I know.
That's all the cards I have.
All right. With no one else to speak, I am going to close the public hearing. Gentlemen?
You're in the next section.
In the next section? Okay. All right, the public hearing is closed. Gentlemen, questions for Scott?
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple. Scott, how many actual houses? I thought the one lady said 65 homes?
In the neighborhood down DAV Avenue?
Yes.
I'm not sure the exact number. I've driven in there. It's a single-family residential subdivision, and... But that's probably about right.
Yeah, it is. On the Highway 18, the number came up of 1,000 feet wide in the road with two turning lanes from each direction. Is that a 50-50 split? Is it 500 this side and 5 that way? Or do we know at this point?
We don't know. We haven't seen anything from Department of Transportation on it and what would be required. We don't have specifics on the site plan and everything. Really, what's before you is if this site itself is appropriate for this rezoning. So as far as egress, ingress, and stuff, in and out of the store, we don't have that information or site plan for approval or anything, because that runs through an approval process.
According to your presentation, I don't believe there was a plan in the works for stoplight, red light?
No, sir, it wouldn't qualify. I can speak to that. I've seen many, many of these things, and that wouldn't come close.
Okay. Do we have a road count for 18 there at that location?
I'm sorry?
Traffic road count on 18?
I'm sure we do. I'm not sure what it is. I mean, I could obviously find out.
You stated...
But there has to be a traffic analysis done in order to approve the store. So that has to be done as part of the process. And that would be the count, the increased amount, estimates, stoplight, turn lanes, and all those things have to be considered when that plan comes in to be processed. We can't require those in advance at a rezoning.
You stated that your zoning board voted 1 for, 6 against?
They voted 1 in favor of and 6 opposed to approving. That's right.
Yeah. Was there a basic reason for that vote against? I mean, was...
I'm not sure what the planning board's exact reasons were, but I think a lot of it was the community came out and said that they are not in favor of this happening. They were also sidetracked on other issues that really weren't relevant or part of what was being asked. And that's, is this appropriate rezoning for this piece of land to commercial? That's really what's before the board, and that's what was before the planning board.
That's all I have for now, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, Scott, could this request have come to us from Mr. Fan or hypothetically from any property owner without a, "This is for Dollar General," or "This is for any specific need"? Could it have come as, you know, "I'd like to rezon this for retail purposes," you know?
Yes, sir. And that really... That really is the way that it comes to you. You just happen to know that it's Dollar General, and the applicant shared those things. Applicants do not have to share that, or all the details that this applicant has shared. They just have to request a rezoning to general business, as you mentioned, with no detail. So we're not voting on Dollar General, even though you all know that Dollar General is what's being considered.
Any other questions or comments?
Does the applicant want to speak to this issue?
I don't know. I'd have to ask his attorney if he would like to speak.
I don't think he has anything additional to say, but if you all have questions on him, I'd rather him simply like to talk to you.
I just wanted to know what his thoughts were on it, and something about him, his age and...
If you would, please come on up to the microphone so we can all hear you.
I might just answer your questions would probably be better, because I think you're laying it really covered. But I'm Larry Fan. I live at Vista Mont, right behind some of those vacant buildings she's talking about. And I was just trying to do something to make the neighborhood more convenient, because we're all getting older, and we need somewhere to go. It's a little bit near. And I didn't know it was going to create all this ruckus, to be honest with you. But I would like to sell it, and I would like to see a Dollar General there. And I'm not saying that what some of these people are saying is not true. All I can say is that everybody in my neighborhood that I talked to said they would like to have one also. And I'm right across the road. I think Mr. Abley used to live over there at one time. So it's entirely, of course, up to you guys. I mean, I'll answer any questions you'd like to ask me. And the reason I got a lawyer is because I do work some still, and I travel some. And so I'm not here to take care of all this sometimes.
How long have you owned that property there?
I think I bought it in 2000, I believe. Somewhere right there, about 99 or 2000.
Okay, I just wanted to see who you were and hear from you as opposed to listen to everybody else talk about you.
Yes, sir. I understand. And I would have represented myself, but Susan is my attorney, and she handles stuff for me.
I understand that.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Can I ask a question? Ma'am?
Ma'am, I've already closed the public hearing. Any other comments or questions, gentlemen?
Mr. Chairman, let me pick on Scott a little bit more.
Yes, sir.
I love it when you all grill me. It makes me feel good. Thank you.
Well, Scott, you did a good job, and you told us why this would fit. Everything would fit. And the merit to build it seems to be there. The merits not to do it seems to be, number one, dead end roads; number two, traffic, too much traffic. And I guess you would say more than anything else is that we just don't want it in our neighborhood. So from your perspective, does it create a burden and traffic load? Does the fact that the dead end road's there, you only have 65 residents, that doesn't seem to be a traffic problem? So the merits, if you could tell us the merits of why to build it, can you help us with merits while we shouldn't?
I can't help you too much with it, because we have analyzed it and we have looked at it. The truth is, if you look at the zoning map on DAV Avenue, there's already general business in between the R1 residential, single-family subdivision and this corner on 18 and DAV, which would become commercial. There's also a significant R3 residential in there to serve as future buffer if a buffer is needed to mitigate. You can't see this parcel from that neighborhood, and a half a mile is really quite a distance in general when you're looking at land uses. I mean, in the city of Morganton, you certainly couldn't make a decision on a half a mile and say that it's an impact. The traffic analysis will address any of those issues coming in or out, egress or ingress where it can't be approved. The site plan would fail. So the same with the environmental stuff on septic or sewer, buffers. All those have to be met, or the site plan can't be approved.
Well, there were three points on the opposition that I can identify with. Number one is that you already have two or three convenience stores there, and that's not needed. That would be one consideration. I think they also said that it was only 2.6 miles to even bigger and more stores. The other thing about keeping the neighborhood, you know, safe, serene, obviously could be a B point on that development. And the other one is the people who own those businesses live and have lived and operated a business for many years. And is the feeling that this store would put those stores out of business? Are there not enough businesses for Dollar General and those stores, in your opinion?
Of course, I can't answer that, sir. The Dollar General does an extensive investigation of profit and loss before they make a decision to locate. Every business is always affected by another business. However, convenience stores and Dollar General are definitely different businesses. And one is much less expensive, much more comprehensive, and is visited as more of a destination to buy needed items. The convenience store is, "I happen to be there getting gas, and I need this thing." So I can't answer if it will hurt the others or will not hurt them.
Excuse me, one more, Mr. Chairman, if you will.
Go ahead.
The point that was made that on DAV Avenue, instead of accessing off of Highway 18, is there rules, regulations that would not allow them to access off 18, or is it too close to a road already there?
And again, we're back to the traffic analysis and safety that would have to be looked at by Department of Transportation in a comprehensive study and with existing driveways and things that are along that section. So I can't really answer that specifically, except for to say that that would be addressed.
Any other questions or comments? Tell me about water and sewer again, please.
Pardon me. There is existing water there to the site. As far as the sewer goes, there is no sewer serving that area, so it would have to be a septic system. And my understanding is that analysis has been done on that particular parcel to see if it would indeed meet the needs of a Dollar General store layout or something of that size commercial, and that it would. And so, like I said, without the site plan, we haven't gone into review of all the elements, and so I do not have any of those plans before me.
Will any of the traffic studies or the other studies that have to be done negate the building of Dollar General? If any of the studies are done, the traffic studies, et cetera, are done, could any of those findings negate the building of a Dollar General?
They could.
In what manner?
Well, if it can't meet the traffic analysis or needs of Department of Transportation, they simply won't grant a driveway permit to it. And so it's not going to be built. Does that answer your question?
Anything else, gentlemen? All right, gentlemen, what's the pleasure of the board on this matter?
Mr. Chairman, I think, you know, I respect both sides. People are very passionate about this issue, but we also have a planning and zoning board that voted 6 to 1. And outside of one case in the last 16 years, we probably never overturned a decision of the planning and zoning board. And with that, I'll make the motion that we deny the request for the rezoning.
All right, gentlemen, you've heard Wayne's motion to deny the request for the zoning. All in favor, signify by raising your right hands. Okay, that's two. All in favor. All against, raise your right hands. It passes 3 to 2, or Wayne's motion fails 3 to 2.
Moving on to informal comments, Madam Clerk, is anyone?
Mr. Chairman?
Pardon me?
Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry.
You still have to have a vote on approving it.
Okay.
If you want to approve it.
All right. The recommendation... Well, Wayne's motion was not to approve it, right?
Right.
So you want me to go ahead to take a motion to approve it?
Right. Because that would have to have the impact statement.
All right. Is there anyone that would like to make a motion to approve? I see, I'm sorry, JR. We'll entertain the motion to approve the request then. All right, here is no motion to approve the request. The request fails without motion. Am I correct, Mr. County Manager? I mean, County Attorney.
It hasn't passed.
It has not passed, okay. There was no motion to approve. Now am I finished, I think, right?
Unless somebody wants to make a motion.
I heard no motion. So I'm declaring that the motion didn't... We had no motion, so that motion obviously didn't pass, because it wasn't made. Okay. All right. You have a question? Okay.
So to clarify, Mr. Chairman, by no motion being made by the board, the action is to deny the rezoning request.
That would appear as to what it would be, my friends.
Yes, sir, that was a statement.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. All right, that concludes that hearing. If you folks would like to stay, we would welcome you to stay with us. If you desire to leave, we'll give you a moment to exit.
It's the strangest thing that ever happened to me in the last...
There's not a stronger than a carry. There's not. You know? So evidently, their board voted on a motion. Many people...
All right, Madam Clerk, we'll move into item number eight, informal public comments. Does anyone sign up?
Yes, sir, we have four signed up. Mr. Carl Reese.
Mr. Reese?
Yes, sir.
All right, sir. Thank you.
It's a long story, but let me get as short as I can.
Listen... Try to go three minutes if you can for me, okay?
Be tough. I'm sorry, sir. Anyway, I try to make... I tell you what, what I have here, I'd like to give to you, and you can get it, you know, and keep it. But going back to the original question, first of all, Mr. Carspel, are you related, not related, but do you go back to the carspel that ran, was the judge here, the very first charge?
The very first one, I'm sorry.
The judge that worked in this, you know, in the judgment, over in the cathedral, no, over there where the, what do you call that again? That place over there.
Courthouse.
Huh?
Courthouse.
Not the courthouse, the old courthouse. I mean, don't wonder where the park is.
The old courthouse, is that what you're talking about?
Yes, sir.
Are you asking me was I ever?
No, 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 but they're not, you Carswell, somehow going back six, seven, or six, seven or eight.
Are you related to a judge that was?
No, 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 no.
Just curious, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
As you say, shut my mouth, right? Okay, my biggest, well, that's been, the wall that you get in this area from Hickory to Morganton is extremely sad. Could be improved tremendously. It's not done properly. I'll give you an example, before I move to, I'm sorry, I'm Carl Reese, I live at 1668 Bumgardner Drive, this would be Drexel, North Carolina. But anyway, one time I lived over in Montania View, you know, I don't know, 20, maybe 15, 20 years ago, they put in a line where I lived, that's Montania View. I lived, I said, I mean, that was on the upper side, the water went straight up, and naturally, if it's high, anything junk goes, naturally flows back. And that water was as good as ever, extinct ever. And when you have problems, you should have it all the time, you have cartridges in the freezer, not freezer, in the machine that filters the water to, you know, some more. And the cartridge that I had at the time, I mean, it's called for last half a year. I live in the bottom end over in Drexel. And it's the very bottom, you know, the west, on the, yeah, the west, no, it's the north side, I'm thinking back. It's awful. So when I first came to Drexel, by the way, I'm married to Gil Bumgardner. And when I came, when I went, you know, when I married her, I sold my house and moved into her house. And I went to Drexel and told him, you know, this is awful. So I asked him to put a, there's a system in water that drains water periodically, just to get rid of the junk. Are you aware of that? I'm, you know, this is a problem, sad. And for some reason, when I see people in, you know, carrying these, cock, these bottles filled with, you know, water that buy at Walmart or someplace, shouldn't be, it's a waste of money, but that's a different story. But it should be done. And if you talk to, you know, people that work on water, hydrologists, they'll tell you exactly what you need to do. Serious, it's bad. So anyway, as a stop measure, I would recommend that all, that based on the relation where the water comes from, the bottom ends need to be drained periodically, because you will never improve their water. That's one part. A second part could be, I don't know how good the water, water system is, you know, as it's manufactured. You know, there are a lot of systems, I'm a chemist, and the systems that clean their water as good as ever, I'm sorry. Shut up. But anyway, that's a problem.
Okay, I'm gonna have to ask you to finish up, okay?
Well, that's a sad story. Well, listen, oh, one, oh, wait a second, I have to say one thing. I was in 82nd Airborne, and one of the things, you know, you jump for, you know, Kennedy and everybody else, and in 1960, by the way, does anybody remember, hang on for a second.
All right, your time is up, I'm gonna have to ask you to stop. Okay, I gave you some extra minutes.
I know, I said 16 minutes, though. That's what I requested.
You're finished, okay?
I understand, sir, but I tell you what, I'm sorry. I know, I'm just trying to talk, never mind. I tell you what, I met a guy over at Senior Center. It's very important. It's a GI, it's a.
Sorry, your time's up, okay?
Airborne.
We can talk.
Let me ask you what can I do? Let me ask you this question, what I just talked about. Who should I talk to in this area? It's you or the city council, I'm sorry.
We'll get back with you and we'll tell you who to get in touch with, okay?
Pardon?
We'll get back in touch with you and tell you, we got your address and everything, and we'll see what we can do for you, okay? Thank you, sir.
Airborne, come on.
Mr. Jesse Fisher?
My name's Jesse Fisher, my wife and I, Jean, own and operate Fisher Mobile Home Park. I want to speak with you tonight about what I've always been talking with about, is the proposed jail. I have some objections, I'm sure that you've heard all of the objections before, but I'd like to let you know what I think about them. Parking, especially at the downtown site, at the proposed downtown site, $3 million for a parking deck, man, that's ridiculous. And being able to expand, there's no expansion. The engineer said last night, it would be very difficult to expand the jail if it was necessary. Courthouses, you're gonna have to do something with courthouses, where are you gonna put them, if you'd use the downtown site? And the biggest thing about all of this thing is that 60-inch culvert down there. If you people take that thing and be responsible for it, it's gonna cost you $3 million today. 10 years from now, it may cost you $15 million to do something with it. That site is not tenable for what you want to do or what's being proposed to do with it. You've got a 12-acre site, if you don't do anything else, go out on the 12-acre site and build a jail out there. The downtown site is not tenable, in my estimation. I don't even know how close that building's gonna be to that 60-inch culvert. And if it happens, has, if it falls in and has to be opened up, how far is it gonna have to be opened up at the top? It's 45 feet deep. You may have to be 80 feet wide at the top of that thing to get the angles right on it. I just don't see that site being tenable. Another thing, all I've heard is what's best for the city of Morganton, best for the city of Morganton. This isn't a city of Morganton jailhouse, it's a Burke County jailhouse. City Morganton comprises 16,000 people, according to Sally Sandy, according to Mr. Taylor. Population Burke County is 88,000 to 90,000, depending on who you talk to. So there is less than 20% of the county. I feel that you need to do, and you have to do, what's best for this county, not city of Morganton. I know you're under a lot of pressure, a lot of pressure, because I see the full-page ads, I see everything that's running in the paper, and it is not an easy decision. Also, one other thing, I would like to see the five commissioners have a town hall-type meeting, to where you can sit down with a group of people, that they can ask questions and ask why you do favor or don't favor one site over the other. And let's get this, let's get this out in the air. You know, this may be something that you're interested in, may be something you're not interested in. I've not heard anybody say one way or the other, not in the newsprint, and that's where I basically get my information, is this newsprint and from talking to a few of the commissioners. That's my two cents. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher.
Mr. Bryant Lindsey?
Okay. If you could get it to focus. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Mr. Steen, Mr. Simpson, Kaye. I wanted to thank you very much for having the joint meeting yesterday. In my opinion, the most positive reported statements from that meeting were your statements, Mr. Chairman, specifically that quote, "The county is not going to rush into this," and that everything is going to be vetted before a final decision is made. And those, I thought that was very positive and has to be well-received by everybody. I'd like to make two comments in respect to that. I'm trying to prepare a letter that I'm going to take to the editors and the publishers, not only of the Morganton News Herald, but also the Hickory Daily Record. And I'm not asking them to take a position or to, and I'm not seeking to, you know, to influence their editorial decisions, except that I would like for them to devote some investigative reporting to why the current Burke Cataba confinement facility wouldn't or couldn't be an important part, and maybe even the key part, of any plans for Burke County going forward for the next decade or longer with respect to jail facilities. In spite of the best efforts of all involved at this point, I think there's still confusion about, you know, why there hasn't been a lot of more research and discussion devoted to the present jail facility. Before I send any letter to them, I'd like to run it by you all individually, because if I'm saying anything in it that's factually incorrect, rather than debate about whether or not I've said something that, you know, is factually incorrect, you know, that at least you're not blindsided by stuff. I think if I were running a newspaper, you know, I would want to have some kind of policy whereby I checked, you know, with people who, you know, are both parties to a dispute, you know, before a letter was submitted, and stuff could be rebutted in advance, you know, people could go ahead and rebut it, so that debate would be constructive. I think that there, you know, that, I don't know how either of the editors or either of the publishers will receive that. I know they have lots of other priorities, but I think it's important to resolve any questions regarding the existing jail facility going forward. And I hope you all feel the same way. The second is that I think it might be possible for, for groups all across the county to work together with respect to vetting, as you've indicated, to make sure there is broad consensus, if possible, before the commission decides what's the best way to proceed. And in conclusion, I'd like to thank you for the 180 seconds you've allowed me tonight to vet. Did I make it?
Yes, sir.
I did, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lindsey.
Susan Thomas?
I'm here with a plea to have a home torn down. I live, I've lived about 11 years in the Chesterfield community, and I own a home there. I own two homes in that area and some land. In addition, there's some other landowners there, and everybody's got signs up for sale. And we think that the home at 3396 Pine Road is something that discourages any potential buyers. The home's been empty for at least five or six years. About three or four years ago, there was a fire. And I believe that that fire originated with some undesirable drug users. We've seen them there, and we've called for assistance a few other times. Now that it's burnt, it's just a charred shell of a home. There's really nothing but splintered wood, and there's an awful septic tank that's there. I'm very concerned about the psychological impact on the neighborhood. It just, it's just a blight on the neighborhood. There's children in that neighborhood, I'm very concerned with them. I had a little girl ask me, is your house gonna burn down? Is our house gonna burn down? I mean, it just is a terrible thing to see. And you just pray for that no one was hurt in that fire. But the house has been uninhabited, it has a couple of signs on it hazardous, not fit for inhabitants to be there. And so, on behalf of my community, we're asking that you please allocate funds to have that torn down and removed from our neighborhood. I appreciate you. This has been the most interesting, interesting thing I've done all year long, so I thank you for your time.
I can assure you, this has been one of the most interesting nights that we have ever had, to say the least.
Thank you, you're Halloween.
Have no more cards, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman, I believe that's on our item for decision tonight.
It is. Gentlemen, do y'all need to take a quick break?
I think we do.
Yes.
All right, let's take, let's stand in recess for five minutes. Let me call us back in the session, we'll move on to item number nine, is the consent agenda. Mr. County Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There are 10 items on your consent agenda. BOC, Resolution in Support of Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Clerk reappointments to the Burke County Planning Board. Clerk appointments and reappointment to the Parks and Recreation Commission. Fire Marshal, Resolution to Adopt Burke County Emergency Operations and All-Hazard Plan. Number five, JCPC, Bylaws and Funding Policy Revision for 2015. Item six, JCPC, Appointment of Doug Knight. Item seven, Tax Department EMS Collections Report for August 2015. Item eight, Tax Department Tax Collection Report for September 2015. Item nine, Tax Department Release Refund Report for September 2015. And item 10, Tax Department Resolution Postponing 2017 Reappraisal of Real Property in Burke County.
All right, gentlemen, you've heard Brian's report on the consent agenda. What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve the consent agenda is printed.
All right, gentlemen, you've heard Wayne's motion. All in favor, signify by raising your right hands. Be five to nothing, Madam Clerk. Moving on to our items for decision, item number one, from a cooperative extension, is a new staffing plan for a cooperative extension presented by Spring Williams Bird.
Thank you, and good evening. Yeah, you got it right that time, so good job. It is our new strategic plan that was approved in August of 2014 for a cooperative extension, and has started that process. It is a two-year plan, and as you know, we are trying to make a decision before the July 1, 2016 budget, so we can let our staff know what the plans are. So that is why I'm here today. We have had our FCS, our Family Consumer Science, position vacant since September of 2014, so right at a year, a little over a year now. And I would like to move forward with hiring that position, but would like to know from the board to go with a one-county only, or if I need to get a position filled that would work in two counties. You do have two scenarios there, and I know we've talked about this multiple times, so if you have any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer those.
All right, questions for Spring?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, and Spring, I'm not picking on you. But this is the kind of thing that drives commissioners crazy. It's continuing to have mandates and no money for it. I don't know if you gentlemen did the math or not, but the county current is $170,779. What they're proposing is that to go to $215,036. I did not add the cents, by the way. So we have moved, her request is to move to $215,036. The state's part is $95,496. So we, we're paying most of the money, we built you a nice, what, one and a half million-dollar place to do business with over there, and the state keeps taking money away from us and mandating, and I've called Warren Daniel, but I couldn't, I didn't get a reply from him today. But if we're gonna supply two and a third times the money that the state is, we ought to be boss, but your boss is the state. The state gives you direction, the state, you know, is... The state gives you direction, the state, you know, is your protocol person to be talking to. So, you know, personally, I don't want to do it, you know? The merit not to do it is that we have, for the fourth time, I believe it's the fourth time since I've been here, including the 4H person, taken it on our backs to continue the program, and the state does less and less and less. And then, pet peeve of my own has nothing to do with you or even these figures. When agriculture is 27% of North Carolina's gross national product, why are they pulling in their horns and forcing poor counties, we're not poor, I take that back, individual counties, to pick up the tab? And if we just keep doing that, will they going to keep doing it? If you don't keep the kid from getting in the candy jar, he's going to go there as much as he can, he or she. I mean, necessary, but I don't like the proposal, is what I'm saying.
I understand your concern. I do want to mention that this is NC State University, too, not the state government. I've been told to make sure to say that. We are through NC State University, so that is who the plan is coming through. Also with that, you do have a choice. I mean, you can say, "We don't want to provide the programming at the same level we have." And if that's the case, if we want to keep the amounts down, then I will have to let go some of the staff. So at the same...
And then you'd say to you, "Okay, which one is that?", and you'd really be in a tight place.
Well, and that's what I'd have to do. I mean, that's what I get paid the big bucks for, right? But I know that that is a concern, and every, I will tell you, every county is having these discussions, ala Hundred Counties and the Cherokee Reservation, because when the university come back in and said, "Look, we just don't have the funding anymore. We don't get the federal funding like we used to with the Smith-Leaver Act." That has been cut, so that's been part of that concern. And they had to come back with this strategic plan and do the base model to say, "We're going to fund this. The county can either match it at that amount, or they can cut those positions." But this is all we can do at this point. So, we understand that there may need to be some cuts, but I'm hoping you will help us continue here in Burke County, because we do have one of the top-notch extension programs in the state, so.
Well, on your FCS position, you've got that one where you say that she can cover two counties. Can she cover two counties? He, she, I don't know.
Yeah, that position's not filled, so before I fill it, I want to know what you can do, what you want. They can do it, but they would have a smaller program here in Burke County. If we put them serving two counties, they wouldn't do as much. As you know, we do have, with the Healthy Burke, we do have the new Kate B. Reynolds Funds here, trying to do Healthy Places Burke. And so, I have talked with them, couldn't get any funding from that part, but we want to do some collaboration with the nutrition and health and nutrition programs that extension offers. They would like to utilize some of our services out in the county to help promote that. So if we would collaborate with them, no, we need somebody here in Burke County to really work hard to do that. One of the things I did to try to help extend it since we've been vacant for a year, I did work with the state to get some SNAP-Ed monies, which is the supplemental nutrition monies. And we do have a full-time person that's going into the schools right now, doing nutrition education. And we're doing a pilot program with Chesterfield Elementary, and then several other schools are also getting that, to try to help build on that. But if we could get a full-time FCS agent, whether it's male or female, we would really concentrate on the food preservation, the food safety, the new modernization act that's coming out. We're going to have to do a lot of teaching with that. There's going to be no longer a serve-safe program that the restaurants are doing. We at NC State University is creating a new food safety program with that modernization act, and we'll have to be doing training for all the restaurants in the area. So instead of going to another county, we want them just to come to Burke County to get that.
The term, term we just, to quote a term that was, you know, what's the merits behind the state? Why do you think they're continuing to decline in participation on such an important part of our life?
I don't think it's a decline from the state side. I think it's a decline in the other dollars that come in, like as you mentioned, the state dollars. Extension is not under the agriculture budget. We are actually through the university budget under higher education, and then we go down. So the university gets our money, and then they take their chop from it before it comes to extension. So I think that's a lot of what has hurt extension, is because we are known as ag extension, but when we talk to legislators, they think, "Oh, we didn't cut ag." But they did, because they cut the higher education. So I have talked with both Warren, Senator Daniels, and Hub Blackwell about where we are in the budget, and they can put a provision in the budget when they're doing these new plans to say, "Do not cut extensions." So if that ever comes to pass, maybe we'll have to get some more money back.
So the same question to UNC, why do they keep, you think it's a money issue, or they're just... Well, I don't know how to say it any other way, but maybe if you were under North Carolina State, who's agricultural-minded, you might get more money, huh?
Well, we are, under NC State University that's ag money. We're under the College of Ag and Life Science. We, I think it's just a matter of the funding. They look where to cut, and once you go down the line, everybody wants their piece, and they want to pass it on, the cuts, to the people below them, just like the state does to the counties.
So who do we go to as commissioners to help your cause?
To start, you start with our extension director, and hopefully they would take it up the chain to the deans and the chancellors, and eventually those legislators, I would think. We are doing interviews right now for our state extension director, and Burke County was lucky enough to get to host those, so we have one of those candidates tomorrow, if you want to come by and meet them.
I'll be in, right?
Okay. Well, you can go see them there.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, what is the pleasure of the board on this matter?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the new extension staffing plan, keeping all current positions, including an FCS position, serve only Burke County. Funding provided effective July 1, 2016, to support the new percentages established in the staffing plan.
All right, gentlemen, you've heard Jeff's motion. All in favor, signify by raising your right hands. All opposed? Forty-one, Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number two, Community Development Remediation Authority Requested for Resolution at 2203 Liberty Church Road, Abandoned and Nuisance Mobile Home. Bradley, there you are.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Tonight, we bring for you the item for decision regarding 2203 Liberty Church Road. As referenced and as included there within your packet, the issues there with the property concern a vacant and neglected double-wide mobile home. The mobile home has been vacant and abandoned for quite some time. We, through code enforcement, had received numerous complaints leading up to tonight's events. Within, in conjunction with Burke County building inspections, the property was posted as unsafe. A condemnation proceeding was conducted, and all proper procedures with North Carolina general statutes have been followed. The property owner is located out of the state of Florida and has offered no feedback regarding cleanup or remedy of the situation. In addition to the neglected mobile home, the property also has numerous solid waste items, which are located on the outside of the home, couches, chairs, items which are a visual eyesore. We continue to get continued complaints regarding the property for the eyesore and the nuisance issues. So tonight, we bring before you the option to grant the planning or code enforcement department the ability to remedy these matters by what means are necessary in the production of issuing out liens on the property to do cleanup and removal of the complaint case. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
All right, questions or comments? Hearing none, what is the pleasure of the board on this matter?
Motion to approve the demolition of the house by, and pass the cost on to the owner.
All right, you've heard Wayne's motion to adopt ordinance number 201513. All in favor, raise your right hands. That would be five to nothing. All right, Bradley, we'll move on to the, pardon me, remediation authority for the burned dwelling at 3996 Piney Road.
Yes, sir. Once again, similar situation as what we just discussed, and as you've already heard from a public comment period from Miss Susan Thomas, who referenced the property in question. 3996 Piney Road is a vacant dwelling which burned in September of 2013. The property is basically charred remains. I would say probably a quarter of the home actually remains on the site. The ordinance before you tonight is to, once again, grant the planning department the authority to remove and demolish the remains of this structure in the form of placing a lien on the property to do so. With this matter here, we would have to do a secured bid for the demolition of that, because we do not have county funding or county resources to turn and remove the structure as it remains. This property owner is last listed to reside in the Winston-Salem area. I know in pre-agenda, I referenced, and it was brought to our attention, that the alleged property owner was deceased. For the record, I have checked Burke County records for death certificates, none exist for the property owner. In addition, I contacted Forsyth County, which is her current mailing address, and that does not exist either. We did, after pre-agenda, mail out and post at the property first-class uncertified letters, which have been received, but no feedback has been provided. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer those this time.
Okay, questions or comments? Hearing none, what, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I was just going to ask one. I think this was the one that we'd kind of requested to see if you'd get next of kin, and you did not get that, I don't get it.
No, no, Mr. Commissioner. We, as said, by general practice, we send out notice first-class mail and by certified letter. I did both of those, as we've done with everything with this process up to this point. In addition, a copy was posted there at the property, which is what Miss Thomas was referencing. In conjunction with some information from the tax department, we did find out that in 2014, I believe, the taxes for the property, which are current and up-to-date, were paid by a foreclosure company in 2014, but in 2015, they were paid by a member of the family. There was a new address which was given to us, which was new to me since pre-agenda. That address was mailed to as well. No feedback from any party. So I've exalted every option I possibly have to contact them.
Well, regardless of who ends up with the property, they're going to have to do what you're going to do, regardless.
Right, right. And as Miss Thomas referenced in her, in her public comment, I mean, this burnt dwelling basically sits from her side porch 30 to 40 yards. I mean, so this is something she sees every day coming in there.
All right, any other questions or comments? All right, what's the pleasure of the board?
Take the motion that we continue with the code and demolish it, as indicated.
All right, you've heard Wayne's motion to adopt ordinance number 201514. All in favor, signify by saying aye. I mean, raise your right hands. Five to nothing.
Either way.
Yeah.
Does anybody realize that I have a real bad silence problem tonight?
And there's 10 drummers up there doing this right now. We're okay. Let's move on to the next item, Communications, a Backup Memorandum of Understanding with Avery County 911, presented by Candy Strazinski. Andy?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the item before you for decision is a request for approval to enter into a memorandum of understanding with Avery County for Burke County 911 to provide use of its facilities for their backup 24/7 if they were to have experience an outage, in which they would man that backup center.
Questions for Candy?
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we approve the Burke County to enter the memorandum of understanding with Avery County to establish a formal arrangement that will allow Burke County 911 to back up Avery County 911, in event they experience a failure in their primary dispatch center.
All right, gentlemen, you heard the motion by Wayne. All in favor, signify by raising your right hands. Five to nothing, Madam Clerk. Thank you for that, Candy. Moving on to item number five, Senior Services, the Icafano Contract Termination and Moore's Ridge Contract, presented by Roxanne Powell.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I'm here to discuss the senior services contract termination with Icafano's Catering and the need for a new contract with Moore's Ridge Incorporated. In May 2015, a contract was awarded to Icafano's Catering and Food Service for the provision of home-delivered and congregant nutrition meals. Included in that contract was a requirement for the vendor to provide a 100% performance bond. A letter of termination was sent to the vendor on September 22, 2015, after several unsuccessful attempts to secure that required bond. On October 5, our staff began working with the second lowest bidder, Moore's Ridge Catering, to provide the necessary meals. You have been provided a copy of the new contract from Moore's Ridge. You'll note the new caterer's rate will be $4.66 per meal, which is slightly higher than the previous caterer. I'd like to note that the county receives home and community care block grant funds for this service, and in anticipation of the change in the unit rate, we have delayed replacing clients as they have dropped off the program, so that we can stay within the current fiscal budget. Additionally, when Moore's Ridge served as our provider in the past, our contract agreement's allowed invoicing every two weeks with a payment term of 10 days, and they are requesting the same payment terms in this new contract agreement. So for suggested motion, I'm asking you to approve a contract with Moore's Ridge Catering for the provision of home-delivered and congregant meals, and to authorize the county manager to execute this contract, as written.
All right, questions or comments for Roxanne?
Mr. Chairman, just one. Have we received the performance bond yet from the company?
I spoke with him today, and he has received feedback from his underwriter insurance company that the performance bond will be approved. It's just a matter of time before that's delivered in our hands.
Anything else? Hearing nothing, what is the pleasure of the board on this matter?
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to approve the contract with Moore's Ridge for home-delivered and congregant meals. Authorize the county manager to execute the contract, subject to review and/or revision by the county attorney, and pending the receipt of that performance bond.
All right, you've heard Wayne's motion. All in favor, signify by raising your right hands. Five to nothing, Madam Clerk. Thank you. Moving on to item number six is a request for a water line extension. That will be presented by County Manager Brian Steen and Chris Hollifield, General Services Manager.
Go ahead, Chris.
Okay. First, I want to recognize two guys sitting at the table here. You've heard names before, but not maybe seen faces. Some of you I know know these guys, but at least one of them. The guy in the white shirt is Dana Burns. He's the owner of the farm, the chicken farm, down at the end of Homer Burns Avenue. And the guy in the green shirt is Charles Dameron, owner of Dameron Drywall. This is the business that's about three-quarters of the way down the road, I guess. It's a office complex, would have a couple of bathrooms and maybe a kitchenette. Not a large water user, but definitely a commercial business and interest to give credit where credit is due. Mr. Dameron was the first person on this road to request water service of me. We couldn't justify it with his business alone, but the ag business at the end of the road certainly changed the game. So as presented to you in the, well, first, I invited the gentleman to come so you could hear from them and ask questions of them if you wanted to do so. And if they wanted to share anything with you once I finished, then hopefully they'll feel free to do that. As I presented in pre-agenda, the, that you have in your packet, the, my estimate of what the cost would be to extend water service to the end of Homer Burns Avenue, which would estimate a roughly, a cost of roughly $127,000, $128,000. That would provide a six-inch water line to the end of Homer Burns Avenue, which is a little over 1,800 feet, would include, six-inch would include hydrants and fire protection for, the entrance rate for fire protection gives you the lower entrance rate. Service line for the 10 residences or 10 service points along that road, a 20% contingency, and then a engineering fee associated with permitting and the engineering cost for design. The second table below that would show a rough estimate based off what Mr. Burns gets out of his well system that feeds the, supplies the chicken house of the out of his well system that feeds the, or supplies the chicken houses, the four chicken houses with water. Of course, that'll be cyclical as the months go, and also cyclical as the flock moves in and then is harvested and moves out. So there'll be points in between there where there won't be any usage, and there'll be times in the winter where the usage is low, times in the summer when it's hot, when the usage will be much higher. So if you look at that across the board, there are eight months out of the year, it's going to be a hot situation where the birds are drinking quite a bit more, and we estimate based off his pump supply that 280,000 gallons a month. And then I used a 50% cut to get the wintertime months. That's a, you know, it's a bit of a wild guess, but a wag, if you will, but it is a, it's an estimate. It's a good starting point. So if you take 50% off, I vetted my number with Mr. Burns, and he thinks that's reasonable. That comes out to roughly 2 million gallons a year, which is a significant water user on the end of our system. It would certainly have a benefit technically for pulling fresher water through the Johnson Bridge Road area. You see the numbers there that are, as Paul rightly mentioned during the pre-agenda, that's based on just the revenue from Mr. Burns, no other connection points, nor Mr. Dameron's would be included in those numbers. So that just gives you a rough idea, based on his revenue alone and what the payback would look like. That's, of course, inflated, but if you double it, it's still better than what we see in some of the other areas of our water system. The, should I go, you want me to go ahead with the document? Okay. The county attorney has prepared, there was an interest from the board in making sure that we do this from a business standpoint, that we have some, I'll use the word partnership, because I really feel like that's what it is, a partnership with Mr. Burns, that we're extending ourselves, and he's going to meet us in the middle and be a user of our system and devote his water use to us and not to his wells, which are sketchy on supply and sketchy on quality as well, I think he'll tell you maybe later on. That document's been prepared by the council, and it's before you. I would make one, I guess, one suggestion to that document, maybe a possible change or an edit. I was asked earlier today about a minimum bill situation, and right now is a good example of when that would come into effect. I was talking to Mr. Burns earlier, he has no birds on site right now because of a delay, if you will, with his, he's a, not Tyson, it's, it is Tyson, it used to be Holly Farms. I kept saying, "Don't say Holly Farms." Tyson has a bit of a delay, so he doesn't have birds right now, so he's not using any water right now. So water would be zero at this point, his usage. So to protect, I guess, the county's interest during a period like that, there should be some consideration for a timeframe, a given timeframe, for a minimum bill. What that number is, I certainly wouldn't start to say today, but have no idea what your intent is. But for a timeframe and a minimum bill, I would recommend that you protect yourselves for a time just like this, where he doesn't have birds, but we'll get them shortly.
All right, gentlemen, questions or comments?
Well, one more thing, too. Just to be clear about what we're asking, I guess, or what we're needing tonight, certainly these things from a contract standpoint could be worked out down the road with Mr. Burns, but I guess for me, direction that it is your interest to do this and for me to go forward with the engineering or not, I guess, would be what we're looking for at this stage of the game.
Okay, questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, I've been working for four years or more to get some of these chicken farmers some water and some of the businesses in our county, and about all the entities that has water, that includes Valdez, Morganton, Burke County, Icarus, they have excess water. So I think it's a good marriage, and I think it's a good time to deliver these folks some good water.
Okay, anyone else? All right, gentlemen, what's the pleasure of the board? If there's no other questions.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we proceed with the engineering on the project and get all the details together and work out some kind of agreement in terms of minimum use, whether it be per month or per year, however is reasonable, and then bring that back to the board. We need funding amount and where the funding comes from. I don't have that documentation in front of me, sir.
I don't either.
Scott, can you pull that up, please?
And appropriate up to $130,000 of the general fund. Would you agree to that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, gentlemen, you've heard the motion by Jeff.
And then the motion that we had was to approve the installation of a water line. I mean, are we supposed to stop after engineering work is done to get further approval, or do we, we going to go ahead and construct?
I'd like to get some final costs and see all the details before we...
Okay. All right.
Engineer, if we turn this over to an engineer and really do a proper study, he'll whittle on my estimate, I hope, in the right way. It'll be a firmer number.
Kay, did you get the motion?
Can I make a comment?
Did you get the motion? Take your time to write it out, and I'm going to let Dana say something, then you can write the motion and repeat it back to me. Yes, Dana, go ahead.
Everybody that lives on this road, Homer Burns Avenue, has got water that's iron. It's darker than it comes out of the wells than this wall right there. It's pitiful. The water is pitiful on that road. It is pitiful. And the people that catches my chickens and stuff, I tell them not to even drink it. I wouldn't drink it, and I don't expect anybody else to. And it's just, you know, I appreciate your time tonight and hearing me and everything, but the water out in there is, I mean, this man right here will tell you, it's pitiful. He wouldn't even use, I wouldn't, he'd only use it in his coffee. I mean, it's bad.
Excuse me, I've already pulled a well permit about three months ago.
Get the microphone over for him. I want him to, that's an important thing for him to hear.
Two to three months ago, I pulled a well permit, and anyway, I thought drilling might be the answer, but there's drill wells in the area, and it's terrible. So I'm actually waiting on this.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, Kay, can you read that back for me, please?
If I remember correctly, it was to get engineering costs, develop a contract, and come back.
Is that it, Jeff?
Good.
Okay, and then we can go from there.
I'm just, I don't know if we're going to incur some cost from the engineer prior to us getting to a point to be able to have final, or we wanting to go ahead and bid the project and then award the project.
Yeah, I have $21,000 in as, no, it's contingent, $30,000 for the engineering, but that's for a complete project. That'd be the design. Just to work up an estimate, there may be a small cost that I could probably fund that from my water and sewer budget, if that's the desire.
Paul?
Cover that small.
We need some financial in the motion or not?
Well, if all you're going to do is, at this point in time, authorize, you know, some engineering work, then I'm not familiar with Chris's budget, but if he says he's got money in water and sewer budget just to do the engineering work, then, you know, we can bring the other back later.
All right. It'll be a very, you know, $30,000 would be my estimate for the entire project. It'll be a fraction of that.
Jeff, let me ask you a question. What is your desire after we get the engineering done?
Well, at that point, I think I'll give Chris time to look at, you know, get all of his numbers kind of together in terms of what your estimates are, and come up with a reasonable contract that...
You're looking for a finite, a more concrete cost than my estimate. That's fair enough. Now, what about your point, too, Johnny, about the contract with longevity for, that we'd entered with Mr. Burns that council has provided? That'll be something we want to massage and work up before I come back, and we'll come back with both those documents.
I think that would be appropriate. JR, do you think so?
Yeah, you certainly don't want to execute it at any time before the county agrees to go ahead with it.
Okay. I think we're all kind of agreeing that the project's going to go through. We just need some good numbers and a good contract before we move forward. So we have to come back on this?
Well, yeah, because, now hopefully, we'll have some estimated numbers on what the total project cost would be, and we need to get funding to authorize us to move forward and execute. You know, well, we just need to have a good idea of how much money we need to appropriate to move forward with the project, and then bid it and see how the bids come back.
That's right, and I should be able to get a number fairly quickly back, and, you know, as quick as we could work out a contract you were happy with, we could be right back maybe next meeting or the next.
1,800 feet's a little bit of a ways, but...
What's that?
1,800 feet's a little bit of a ways for the engineering, isn't it?
Well, not for an estimate, for a more concrete estimate. I think that's doable. Yeah, I think that's doable. No, the design, certainly not.
I don't know if you were planning to hire Georgia tech engineers if you...
Absolutely, absolutely not. Go pack. Go pack.
An NC State engineer can do that.
You know, this is probably good enough, Jeff.
I just wanted to ask, you know, are we on, are y'all on a faster timetable than we're adhering to? Are we all comfortable with that? Because you're going to be looking, time you have another meeting in about 30 days.
They seem to be okay with that.
You've been waiting a long time anyway, haven't you? Okay, just, all right, let me get back.
Ms. Dameron thought this was dead, I guess, for a while, probably, and now it's back alive, which is a good thing.
But one thing I'd like to say that he didn't, and I didn't know, and he didn't know, that Tyson was going to be out this long. You know, usually I'm back in two weeks, but they've had a problem or something, Will Spur, and they decided to keep us out two more weeks than what they usually do. So nobody knew that till the last few days.
All right. Everybody remember what Kay said on the motion. All right, the motion's on the floor. All in favor of the motion, signify by raising your right hands. Five to nothing, Madam Clerk. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you for the confusion.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Vice Chair, will you take over for just a minute? I need to step out.
Your own reports and comments from, number one, from the county manager.
I think we're at, I just put my agenda away, but I believe we're at the county manager, and Paul is going to speak about our financial report ending September 30 to 15, and give us a little input on fund balance and whatever.
Thank you, members of the board. The reports you have in front of you is similar to the report that I prepared for the quarter ending last March. I did add a column to the right that shows the percentage, just to give you, you know, a little better understanding of where things stand. The top section on the general fund, the first page, same three categories as before, property tax, interest and penalties, which is by far our largest revenue source. You'll see the budget and actual amount, and we're actually a little bit percentage-wise above last year in the end of September. I think last September, we were a little over 58%. This indicates where it's 60%. Sales tax is where it should be, 25% after the first quarter, and then all the other revenues are all up together, and they're not quite at 25%. So overall, revenues in comparison with where we were last year, we're on, you know, actually a little bit ahead percentage-wise of where we were after first quarter. Each of the department's budgets are listed individually. I won't take time to read down through those, but you can see those, what the budget for each of those departments were at the end of September, the actual expenditures, and then, like I said, to the far right, you'll see the percent of the budget that's been expended through the first three months. If you just want, you know, quickly look down at the bottom line, at the end of the first quarter, we spent 22% of the budget, so we're actually a little bit better than, you know, on a even, you know, month-to-month scale, we're a little bit better off than where we would normally be. Bottom line, the fund balance, if you look at the increase here, it's almost 17 million. That is within, well, less than 1% of where we were last year for the first quarter last year. So, you know, this fiscal year, last fiscal year, at this point in time, looks like we're, you know, very stable. You know, nothing really jumps out at me when I look through some of the expenditure numbers, because everything is not evenly spread out through the year. So just because something is, you know, below 25% or above 25%, you know, that's not really, you know, something to, at this point in time, to really, you know, jump at, you know, jump into, you know, get too concerned with, because the timing on some things, you know, is really, you know, depends on the month that, you know, items get paid. So overall, everything looks fine there. Second page are the enterprise funds, water and sewer, solid waste disposal, solid waste collection. Everything's on pace there. There's nothing to be, you know, necessarily, you know, concerning. The solid waste disposal revenue is a little bit ahead of where we were last year. The water and sewer revenue is just slightly ahead, but all in all, everything, at least through three quarters, I mean, three months, is, seems to be, you know, on par, so no concerns.
All right, questions for Paul? All right, if there are no questions, we will accept the report as presented without objection. Thank you, Paul. It's time to go around and get comments from the board. Mr. Attorney?
I don't have any comments tonight, thank you.
Safe and happy Halloween.
No comment.
Mr. Chairman, I think a day of prayer will happen before we gather again, and I would just ask everybody to remember that day, and please participate.
No comments, sir.
If y'all will remember to, I'm going to get her in a minute. I want to remind you to get with the clerk about the Christmas parade. We'd got an email, if y'all want to, in the Morganton Christmas parade, we need to let Kay know or Beth know so that they can get a vehicle. So if you would do that, I would appreciate that. That was it, wasn't it, Kay? Just one thing.
Can you reserve a trolley for that?
Yeah, I suppose we could. About a trolley. Any comments, Kay?
I'm good, thank you.
All right, move to our vacancy announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We have the following vacancies on county boards and committees: the Hickory Regional Planning Commission, the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee, Council on Aging, Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, City of Morganton Board of Adjustment for the ETJ, City of Morganton Planning Board for the ETJ, Voluntary Agriculture Board, and the Burke County Board of Adjustment.
All right, Madam Clerk, thank you. Is there anything else to come before the board? Not, we will stand adjourned.